I'm Lisa Monroe, the Director at the Office for the Aging. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for coming out today. We've got a great crowd. I don't know if it's the sunshine that's brought everybody out, but thanks for coming. Had a question, where everybody's from? Is everybody from this area? Or are we from different parts of the county? Just curious where everybody's coming from. Danby, most people from Danby, others? Okay, great. Well, welcome. It's been many years since we've done a public hearing in Danby, so glad to be here. I just wanted to give a little overview of what we're doing today. So this is our public hearing. Our public hearing informs our plan for the year. So this is an abstract, which is at your table, and it's also on our website. You can check that out, feel free, but we're going to kind of give you a synopsis of that today. Overview of our services and then kind of our plan for the year. It is our plan for 2024, and I think, as most of you know, it is February 2024 already. So we are a little bit into that. NYSOFa, the New York State Office for the Aging, is still a little bit behind in their rollout of getting the plans in order. Typically, we would do this in the prior year, in November, something like that, getting it into NYSOFa for approval to implement in the year, but we're behind still. Thanks to COVID. Yeah, so either way, that doesn't stop us from doing what we're doing. We're already starting to implement this plan, but we'd like to hear from everybody about what they think, any questions. Any feedback informs us how we move forward and any changes that we would make. So with that said, I'm going to introduce Dawn Sprague. She's our Aging Service Specialist here, not here, but at our office, and she's going to go over our services of our office.
Hello. So I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the services in our office, like Lisa said. So first, though, I just want to give you an overview of our mission. So the Office for the Aging mission is to assist older adults and persons with long-term care needs to live independently in their homes and communities with quality of life and dignity. So we do a lot of assistance with helping people age in place. On the next slide, you'll see covers of our resource booklets. We have resource booklets regarding falls prevention, housing for older adults, long-term care support, our long-term support services, and resources for caregivers. These are available on our website and also at our office. Okay, so some of our directly provided services. We are the Office for New York Connects, Long-Term Care Services, including information, referral, and counseling. Our services are done through a... What happened? Okay. Done through a person-centered approach. Our Personal Emergency Response System, or PERS, is a joint venture through COFA and Doyle Medical, and it's designed for people who may be at risk of falls or medical emergencies. We do health insurance counseling. So we do non-biased counseling when it comes to Medicare, Medicaid, and other insurance options. Public information and outreach. You can find us throughout the county, throughout the year, doing presentations and outreach information. Caregivers Resource Center and Alzheimer's Support Unit. In our agency, you'll find a caregiver's library. We also have a caregiver support group, counseling, and our office conducts a Powerful Tools for Caregivers Six Week Course a couple of times a year, which we will be starting one at the end of this month, if anyone is interested. Project Care Friendly Visiting matches older adults in our community with volunteers who meet with them on a weekly basis to help alleviate loneliness and social isolation. Our Home Energy Assistance Program is assistance with home heating and also helps with heating repair and replacement, clean and tune, and has a cooling program usually in the summer. Sorry. Okay. The Falls Home Safety Assessment and CAPS evaluations. Our trained staff can come visit in the home, and they observe and identify fall risk and other ideas on how to make the home more age-friendly. The Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program provides income-eligible older adults with coupon books every year, normally around July through September. Get About Transportation Tickets. We provide Tompkins County residents aged 60 and over with 20 one-way ride tickets through Get About. We have a Personal Care Aid, ISAP, which is our Expanded In-Home Services for the Elderly Program and Unmet Needs Program, and that offers in-home services and case management to people in their homes. Our Long-Term Care Ombudsman Program serves Tompkins... Okay, now I'm really... Okay, there it goes. Serves Tompkins, Schimong, and Skyler Counties, and it protects residents and gives residents a voice in long-term care facilities and advocates for resolutions of issues. Social Engagement Innovations. Those can include our animatronic companion pets, our ELECUE. You can find both of those in the back, and they're both interactive. Oh, crap. Oh, this is great. And there's also a Senior Virtual Center through Lifelong. Okay, and I think that we also have a yard work and snow shoveling list and other services that we keep in our office. Residents can call if they're looking for someone to help with yard work, gardening, snow shoveling, if they need a handyman, things like that. The community members that are listed on it are either paid or volunteer basis. So we are now going to talk about contracted services of our office. So we contract with Meals on Wheels, which has congregant and home-delivered meals, nutrition counseling and education. Lifelong Senior Center, which provides our Senior Circle Newsletter, which has also gone digital, and there's information about that on the back table, if you're not aware. Mosaic Program, the Health Insurance Counseling Program, the Aging Mastery Program. They do tax assistance. Bingo Size and the Virtual Senior Center. Tompkins County Long-Term Care Services does our case management and the Expanded In-Home Services for the Elderly Program, also known as ISAP, and caregiver respite. Ithaca Neighborhood Housing Services provides health and safety-related home repairs for income-eligible seniors in the community. Finger Lakes Independent Center has registry program linking individuals needing in-home assistance with independent persons per hire. Legal Assistance of Western New York, or Law New York, provides legal assistance in civil matters. The Human Service Coalition is the coordination of the Long-Term Care Committee. And personal care and chores or housekeeping assistance are provided by the following agencies: Caregivers, Home Instead, and the Finger Lakes Independent Center Consumer-Directed Program. Now I'll hand it over to Lisa.
Thank you, Dawn. So just to go back, you don't have to go back, but those contractors that we contract with, of course, do a lot of other things in the community, but that's just the contracts that we have through our funding with them. So, okay. And speaking of contracts, so really, our priorities are... I'm going to continue to go into all that here, but this hasn't really changed, but some of the numbers change a little bit from year to year. But what we do, we administer 28 different programs. We have 29 contracts with 13 different subcontractors, mostly of which Dawn just mentioned. We have 22 different funding streams. We have federal funding, state funding, local, and one private grant. And if there's other things that can come up in the community, if we have funding to help support them, we do do that. One example, going forward, that we haven't finalized the contract yet, but we are starting a small grant with Women's Opportunities Center to help them fund a portion. We don't fully fund it. It's funded by several sources, but to support their Mary Durham boutique pop-up shops. So they're starting to do these little pop-up, like on-the-roadshow travel, pop-up shop in senior housing and some skilled nursing facilities. So we're doing a small contract with them to help support that. So, but to continue our other work that we're doing, age-friendly. We are part of the AARP Age Friendly Communities. It's also the World Health Organization Initiative. We have been a member of that since 2015. We're in the second five-year cycle at this point, and this coming year, we'll be working on some of the work that Professor Warner's City and Regional Planning Class has done some research for us, many of the students. We have several reports that have come out recently that we're still kind of sifting through the information and putting it in a form that can get out to the public to support this age-friendly work. Some of the reports include home modifications, transportation safety, delivery system services, the roles of libraries and fire stations and community centers in our age-friendly work, and also ways that we can help increase childcare. That might sound funny to some people because we're the Office for the Aging, but part of age-friendly is livable communities of all ages. So it's health and aging across all ages. Okay, our Personal Emergency Response System, which Dawn had mentioned. We continue our contract with Doyle Medical Monitoring. We're now getting more and more GPS units out. The technology has improved to the point where we feel comfortable with getting it out. It was a little sketchy for years, but we hope to get even more out and increase our numbers by 10% in this coming year. The Regional Long-Term Care Ombudsman Program, which there's information in the back with Kate. She's our ombudsman program and outreach specialist. Okay, got it right. It's a long one. Yes, so we've received some additional funding from the state, and we'll be hiring two new full-time outreach ombudsman program specialists in 2024. The idea is to get better coverage in the nursing homes, and we do cover Tompkins, Schimong, and Skyler Counties. So we go to all those areas where skilled nursing assisted living and family-type homes, and they need to be visited on a regular basis. And the idea behind this funding was to really try to professionalize this. It's really heavily based on volunteers right now. And to kind of, you know, we'll continue to have volunteers and recruit volunteers, but to professionalize it and have it be a paid program is really important. And so we were able to do that, at least temporarily, hire these two new folks to provide coverage in other areas. We have a new partnership that NYSOFa, again, if I say too many acronyms, please stop me. It's the New York State Office for the Aging. Will be participating in this supplemental transportation funding with Go-Go Grandparents. I don't know if anybody's ever heard of that, but it's really... It's going to be an additional option for people to have transportations in the county. And with this partnership with NYSOFa, it will allow us to provide some limited transportation trips for people in need of medical appointments. It's based on, it's a ride service using Uber and Lyft services, but the people that are driving need a certain star rating, and they're specially trained to assist older adults, not just, you know, transferring them from one place to another, but also familiar with equipment that people might use and things like that. So it's a really great thing. We allotted a certain amount of money with this, and I think the idea is for us to collect as much data as we can so the state can, you know, continue to advocate for this funding. Another thing we do is, and I did not change that, but we do client satisfaction surveys, and now we're not calling it RBA anymore, which was Results-Based Accountability. It's KPI, which is Key Performance Indicators, and we use this data to... It's presented to our legislature, and it also helps us inform our budgeting process. But we also do, on the side from that, we do additional satisfaction surveys in different programs. And this year, we'll be doing a satisfaction survey in our High Cap Program, which is the Health Insurance Counseling Assistance Program, and also our Home Energy Assistance Program, HEEP. We'll be doing that. Project Care Friendly Visiting Program, which Dawn is our coordinator of. We will continue to provide this program. It's a volunteer-friendly visiting matching program for people in the community that would like someone to come in and visit with them. Under that is also our Project Generations Program. The volunteers are mainly students from Ithaca College or Cornell, and we match them with people in the community that want volunteers. We need more volunteers. We continually need more volunteers. The people that want the program are definitely more... is higher than the people that we have to match them with. So it's always just kind of restructuring the program and focusing on how to get the word out and how to recruit people. Another new initiative we're doing this year is we're going to be working with the Volunteer Respite Project, which is New York State Caregiving and Respite Coalition, AmeriCorps Senior Demonstration Project. It's a lot of words. But this is sponsored by Lifespan of Rochester. There's information in the back about it, but basically, it's to start a registry of trained respite caregivers for people to access. It's a pilot program, so it's a five-year program that we will be a volunteer station hub for. The volunteers are trained by lifespan, but they will be part of, you know, coming to our office to report their hours. The volunteers are paid a stipend, so it's for 55-plus to be a volunteer. They're trained, and they're provided a small stipend for the hours that they work. And then we'll be a source of referral through our Caregivers Program to give the people that need the respite, too. So it's kind of a double thing. So we'll be doing that this year. Speaking of Caregivers Resource Center, we'll be continuing our work with that. We are... We have a resource center. We have a caregiver resource coordinator and basically trying to do different programs to help caregivers, informal caregivers, to kind of relieve their stress and burden that they have in that caregiving role. We do this multiple ways. I think Dawn had mentioned that we do caregiver support groups and workshops and one-on-one counseling with people. And we have many referrals in the community for people that need additional help. But in addition to that, NYSOFa has partnered with a couple different places. Trualta, it's a caregiver education and support platform, which is on our website, and you can access a lot of caregiver resources on that. Another initiative is the national movement called Arc Angels. It's a platform that really recognizes how caregivers are seen, honored, and supported. And there's actually a test you can take to determine your caregiver intensity index on it and to see where you are, and you don't want to be in the red. And if you're in the red, we have resources and support to help you. It's really to get you to those resources. Another thing that NYSOFa has provided to us, begrudgingly, I'll just say that because we... It's kind of one of those unfunded mandate things, you know? In addition to our caregiver respite program that we use our federal Title III E funding for, we can provide respite to a care receiver, is what we call it. And we do a full assessment on that care receiver in order for them to be served by someone in an agency, in order to place an aide in their home. It is caregiver respite, so we're relieving the caregiver from what they need to do with the care receiver because we'll have someone there for them. But now, we are now required to do a full assessment on the caregiver as well to determine where they are, what critical areas that they need assistance with, to identify stress, depression, and how they balance their caregiving role. This is, it's a lengthy assessment, and it's kind of managing the caregiver as well as the care receiver. So it's just an additional piece of what we will need to do with folks. It's all good intentions, and it will help people really get through what they need to get through as far as resource identification and filling those gaps for them. So our personal home care aide, so let's see, 2022. I think we hired our first directly provided personal home care aide, really as a result of the home care crisis. We do contract with a couple of local agencies, as Dawn pointed out. But this, we directly are providing our own, and she's been able to really serve about 15 to 20 people on a regular basis that were not served before, that were on a waiting list to be matched with an aide or an agency. We're hoping to hire another one this year, depending on what our funding looks like, which is questionable at the moment. So we'll continue to monitor that and see if we can afford to be able to do that. Targeting, this is a goal that we... This is something that we have to always look to do according to NYSOFa and what our mission really is, is to serve the most underserved populations. That includes non-English speakers, minorities, just to maintain racial and socioeconomic diversity and direct efforts toward older adults with lower incomes. Those are isolated, those that live in the rural areas, and also the LGBTQ community. And we do that with our partners, not just us, but all our contracted services. Those are all the things that we all strive to do. So some of the policy trends. You know, the Aging Network, really, and I say "network," meaning us and our partners play a pivotal role in addressing the social determinants of health and bridging the gaps between acute and long-term care services and supports. So addressing social isolation and loneliness is something that we continue to do. It's something that was really highlighted during COVID, but we continue to do those things, and some of the examples are back there, and I'm not going to say her name, but the AI thing back there. And some of our companion pets and other ways, like our Friendly Visiting Program and things like that, just to really support people that are experiencing social isolation and loneliness. Strengthening our support for caregivers, as I had just talked about, including our home health aides and our informal and family caregivers. Monitoring the master plan and aging process and the investments in programs and services. There's a lot of advocacy happening right now regarding the state budget. I'm not going to go into all that right now, but I think I had sent some things out to our board members, and there's more to come with that, but just continuing to watch how that process goes is part of our advocacy. We will be participating in the Community Health Network Transformation Grant with Keuga Health Partners and the Human Services Coalition as a social care hub to address social determinants of health, to improve health outcomes and reduce healthcare costs, and promote health equity. And just continuing to review the long-term care system and how populations navigate it. We know how difficult it is. This is what a lot of our office spends much of the time doing, is helping people just navigate the systems, the multiple systems out there, and how we can, you know, be a catalyst for changing and making things easier for people. This is our unmet needs list that we keep. We have a little chart in our office that people just write on when there's calls, that like, there's just something that's not available in the community. There's a lot of things available in this community. We have a lot of nonprofits. We do a lot of great work, but there's always just a few things that we can't ever seem to put our finger on to have a regular source of help for people. So this is just that. I won't review it. It is in your abstract. Onto the budget. Okay, so this is... I won't go line by line or anything with this, but this is really just a breakdown of our overall funding, showing you where our county funding, our state funding, our federal funding and other grants and funds are. You can see that the biggest portion is state. Behind that is our county, which supports us greatly. And federal funding in the gray, which has remained relatively flat for many years. I'll go on to the next one, yes. This is just a further breakdown of that chart that you just saw with a comparison from the year previous. It goes through some of our individual grants, and then that goes into the federal funding, and then you can see some of the locally funded programs and the state-funded programs. Most of it, this is an estimate. This is what we anticipate and put in our budget that we will get. It's not necessarily that... We don't have the notification of this actual grant award till much later in the year, but this is what we base our budget on. There's not a lot of changes. There's a couple discrepancies. You can see where there's decreases, and one of those is in our Title C III, which is our Food Net programs. It's really not... It looks different, but the increase from the previous year was our ARPA funding, our American Rescue Plan funding, so it elevated that number. But the number that we have in 2024 is more consistent with what we normally would provide. We got you, Ally. Yeah, sure. So some of the unmet needs funding is kind of a spin-off of our ISAP program. So it's directed to be used for certain things. Although it's called unmet needs funding, it's not... They're not the same thing. It's just the name of the funding source, intended to meet unmet needs. A lot of the reason we use it right now is for the home health aides and for assisting people in their homes. So even outside of that funding for that, we still have some unmet needs. So we can't have enough unmet need funding, apparently. So yes, good question, though. The next chart, this is just... I feel like this is one of the charts that is more interesting to people, and it's not so number-heavy. It's another simplified breakdown of our funding allocation, really. It just shows you kind of what types of programs our funding goes into. So you can see the yellow piece is our New York Connects Program. It's about 10% of our budget. It's 90% state-funded and 10% locally-funded with county funding. Then the orange piece is about 35% of our overall funding, and that's 63% of federal and state-funded and 37% locally-funded, and that's all contracted with Food Net. Our in-home care services is the blue piece. It's about 19% of our funding. That goes to provide... To the agencies, to provide the case management. Also, that includes some of our unmet needs funding. That's included in that $500,000 number. But you can see it's 66% state-funded, 29% locally-funded, and 5% cost share contributions and grants. There's a sliding scale in our ISAP program. So the Expanded In-Home Services for the Elderly Program is a non-medical, non-Medicaid program. So you have to be above... You can't qualify for Medicaid. Well, you can't have Medicaid. There's some changes in Medicaid right now, so some... They've increased the eligibility rates, so some people are qualifying, but at that determination, we can still serve you with this ISAP funding. So it's above that, so in that, above that Medicaid rate of eligibility, there's a sliding scale. So depending on how much you make, you may pay a cost. That's all determined through the assessment process and through our case managers. And then the other piece, the big green piece, is really everything else, all the other things that we've mentioned today. It's our admin. It's our staff. It's individual grants. Forty-six percent of federally and state-funded, forty-four percent locally funded, and other, eleven percent other interdepartmental cost share and contributions. So interdepartmental funding is our HEAP program that is by DSS, the Department of Social Services, but we provide HEAP for people that are sixty and over and/or disabled and that comes to us as a grant for our interdepartmental transfer from DSS to us. So that's what that eleven percent is, so. And that's really all I have. Part of this process, again, is questions, answers, feedback from you all to inform the plan further. We do have, we will, like I said, be, this will be recorded and be put on our YouTube page for people that aren't here, so you can share it and anybody still can provide feedback until the end of February. We have a survey link, Survey Monkey link there, that's on our webpage. That will also be highlighted, I think, somewhere, maybe in the YouTube comments that we can put for people to provide feedback that way in the description. Okay, great. So we'll receive continued feedback and again, all of that will go to inform our plans. So be happy to take any questions or comments you have.
We're going to grab a microphone. The microphone.
Oh, it's just a little question.
Oh, we powered it off.
Hello?
HEAP program, home energy system. So this amount that's given, is that administrative cost only or is that the total amount given to our county residents for HEAP?
That's really just administrative costs. It's not even, it's, she, the question, in case you didn't hear, it was about the HEAP program and the amount. So that's the portion that DSS provides to us to, to do the HEAP processing and applications for people over sixty. It doesn't even provide as much as it does for us to have a staff person do the program, but that's what we get and we just put it together, you know, along with all our other fundings, so, yeah. Ally?
So what can we all do, all of us, to facilitate older Americans act, action to increase the funding? This is federal dollars. The whole world will eventually be old, right? So how do we increase that funding and what can we do actively in our communities now so that money grows?
It's a big, great question. I think advocacy, you know, is a huge thing, talking to, I mean, we've got Senator Webb's and Assemblyperson Kellis's office here today. I think part, and our chairperson of our legislature in the back, Dan Klein. So we do, you know, I think, continuing the talk to explain to people how important this is, I do know NYSOFa's been involved in what they're calling a modernization of the Older Americans Act, just because, I mean, it's updated. As you know, with congregate meals, what people used to want to do at congregate meals has changed and how we use that funding hasn't, since very prescribed for certain things. So, you know, I think continuing to talk to your own, you know, as providers, talking to your associations and your advocacy groups that you can, you know, encourage to do what they have to do to make sure that this is recognized. You know, in, in some of the advocacy that we have, just some of the, some of the information that's come out recently has been kind of, I knew this, but when you see it in writing, it's a little bit disturbing, just that, in our state budget, just for example, so I have some stats here that I'll just read to you. There's approximately about twenty million people currently in New York State. Of those twenty million people, about nine million, nearly half are over age sixty or a caregiver of somebody sixty or disabled. The entire New York State Office for the Aging Budget is approximately two hundred million dollars. With an entire New York State overall budget will be about two hundred and twenty-nine billion dollars. So NYSOFa's budget for those nine million plus people is eight tenths of one percent of the overall, overall state budget. So like priorities, you know, like, it's hard to change those things, but, I mean, that's staggering if you really think about the numbers. And the other, another fact is that, you know, older New Yorkers pay about seventy-two billion dollars per year in state and local taxes, but yet still only, you know, receive point zero eight percent of that funding for vital services that are keeping people in their homes and saving Medicaid dollars much longer than higher skilled care would cost. So I don't know if I answered your question, but I think
We all, we all have a part in that.
Yes, we do all have a part.
Please call your people.
Yeah.
Write letters.
Yes, yes. And if you need assistance doing that, we can help you.
I have a question, I think I'm going to say it right, is do you know whether the new physician assisted program that the college is undertaken as a geriatric focus on it or?
I do not know that, but my gut is telling me no. Only because, and I can find that out, because they've gotten rid of most of their geriatric and gerontology departments. That's, you know, I feel like that's probably not a focus, I don't know, do you know that, Karen, anything?
I don't believe it is.
Yeah.
IC has gotten rid of most of the gerontology?
They, yes, the Gerontology Institute is not existent anymore. Some of the majors, I think, have changed as well. I don't know the facts, so I don't want to say everything, but yeah, so my gut tells me that it doesn't have that focus, but I don't know for a fact. I know. Anybody else? Hi, Jordan.
In 2024 budget, in the 2024 budget, I know this under federal older Americans Act, three E, three C, and three D are all lower this year. Three E is a little higher. Can you explain what those are and why those have changed?
Sure. So Title three B is kind of a catch-all funding source. It's used for supportive services, so that's kind of a vague term that other offices for aging may use for one thing, but locally we use it for, it's kind of everything else, you know, falls under that kind of like administrative costs or different programs, like some of the initiatives that you see back there. So it's more or less just for supportive services to keep, to keep people in their homes. Title, Title three C is congregate and home-delivered meals, there's Title C ones, Title C two, those are mostly, it's also contracted to Food Net for, to provide the nutrition program that we have. And Title three D is health promotion. It's our health promotion programs, it's got to be an evidence-based, this is fun.
I'm gonna lose it.
It's got to be an evidence-based program in order to qualify to receive that health promotion funding and this is contracted to Lifelong. They provide our health promotion programs for us as an office for, some offices for aging in other areas, even our contiguous counties do have their own senior centers underneath the umbrella of their, of their Office for Aging. We don't, it's, we just contract with Lifelong, they are our senior center and so we don't really provide any recreational activities, so it only makes sense to contract that funding out to do those programs. And Title three E is all caregiver funding. It's all meant for caregiver support and respite. So the number of that, why that went up, I'm not positive about three E, that's just based on the numbers that we have, that could have some county funding in there too. The three D, that fluctuates year to year by a few dollars, it never really increases much. The Title three C, that went down because 2023's numbers was adjusted based on the American Rescue funding that we provided to Food Net, so that was an adjusted number. And this is what we're anticipating this year. It could be more, it could be less, but it's just what we budgeted for. And Title three B, that's again, just a budgeting number, we're just, it's an estimate on what we got from previous years and also excluding any like ARPA funding that we might have, we might have used for it in the past, so. Did that answer your question? Okay. Yep, that's fine.
So I've worked at various food pantries over the years and it's been very hit and miss whether the pantry makes any effort to help elderly who are homebound to get food from their programs. Is there a way to coordinate that? Are you doing anything about that? This is free food, not, and highly nutritious food, not, you know, I mean, I've seen what Food Net delivers, sorry, I don't think it's so great. Anyway, sorry.
We, well, we don't necessarily coordinate with the food pantries to deliver food. During COVID, we did all sorts of work like that. We worked with Food Net, we worked with food pantries to try to get people what they needed. Now I'd say our partnership, our relationship is more of an outreach avenue. We go to pantries on a regular basis. Andrea is one of our outreach workers. And coordinating outreach at those events and letting people know what we do and how we can help them is more or less what we do. We don't really coordinate other than that. The pantries are really left up to the volunteers that work with them.
Because it seems to me that there are a lot of people who could benefit from the food pantries and don't even ask to have any food delivered. Sometimes when they ask, they're told no and sometimes people help them.
If you know about that, I mean, I think that we do get calls like that. Our aging service specialists, they help people navigate through these things. If people are needing food, we tell them all about food pantries, where they can get free meals, where they can get congregate meals. So we assist people if they're in need of food and we find a way for them, but it's usually on an individual basis, I'd say. We don't do any like overall coordinating of delivering food to seniors in that fashion, yeah. Anybody else? Jordan?
Okay, we have NYSOFa in the state, but aside from NYSOFa, I don't really understand the relationship of lobbyists to these kinds of organizations, but are there organizations that are lobbying for senior services and senior whatever in the state or, I mean, that takes money, so I'm just
Yeah. It's a good question. I don't know if it's directly for aging services, I'm not sure if Kathy or anybody has anything to say about that. I think it's more about issues. For example, fair pay for home care and Flic has been very involved in that. So there's lobbyists for that issue because they're trying to get, you know, the, the home care crisis is an issue and trying to elevate their pay has been a huge issue and for people to do that type of work. So it feels like it's always around an issue. I don't know if any, I'm not aware of anybody else that's specifically doing it. I mean, there's NYSOFa, there's our state association, which does advocacy. And then there's organizations that are Aging Network related that are doing the same things, like statewide senior action, lifespan, there's some new spinoffs from different things that have happened out there. I just found out this one place called Essential Care Visitors that started out of this woman's basically dilemma that she had to take care of her husband and place him in a nursing home, late-stage debilitating disease that he had. And she started a project, basically, to help someone go into the nursing home and do some additional care that the nursing home technically is supposed to do, but they just don't have the staff. So these are providing even visitors to go into a nursing home to help take care. So there's a lot of people like that, that were at like the joint budget hearing the other day to advocate. So there's Aging Network people that are doing kind of the same thing, but they're also seeking their own funding. I mean, you know, it's not just for that, but still, same, same general mission. I don't know, I don't know, do you know, Dan, of any specific, I think it really revolves around a specific issue, like home care needs or long-term care ombudsman. They have their own source of people that are, you know, trying to do, there's all these like little piecemeal different areas or niches. That's it.
Yeah, yeah. I'm stunned by that point eight of one percent.
Yeah, yeah, I know. And the worst part, I mean, I'll just, I'll have to blow all my statistics here because it's shocking to me, even after even seeing some of these numbers for so many years, that what the, a lot of the money is being spent on. For example, like, it's great, you know, SUNY and Kuni schools, of course we need all that. The budget also includes, the state budget, proposed budget also includes a million dollars, a hundred million dollars, which is half of our entire budget for the nine million people in the state, to improve swimming pools. And
What?
Swimming pools. Yeah, so, you know, half of our budget is going, you know, a hundred million dollars to increase, to improve swimming pools and to put a bath house, house at Jones Beach. So, you know, yeah. You know, it's just interesting what people's priorities are and how to change that and how to really impress upon people the need, yeah.
One thing I can say is that legislators listen to people that reach out and I don't think that we're getting an overflow of people in this community to, to add money to the budget for this particular. I know that organizations do, but individuals can always reach out to their representatives and if you use email, that's the most effective because it's the quickest for us to process, although we do take phone calls and we do take, you know, regular letters, but if you can do emails, that's just the easiest for us, but we're happy to hear from you all and I think that would be a smart thing.
Thank you. And we have at the office too, if anybody needs it, we have a listing of the local representatives and people need their contacts, we can provide that to you.
I think it'd be helpful if you were to describe how aides of all kinds are paid and, you know, what the range is, because I think it's shockingly low. And that's the advocacy that might be actually useful to do, work on in a community, you know, because the lack of, the lack of people who can go into someone's home and help out or go to a nursing home and help out there or all the other places that we'd like to find person to come and assist is, is really due to the lack of pay in that. And so for women who are the ones doing it, they can do better in a restaurant. You know, we've talked about this over the years, but it's really a shocker because they really can do better in your restaurant on tips and we know that tips aren't even very good. And so the whole thing is, this is not important, apparently.
Yes.
Whereas it's actually direly important.
Yes, I agree. I don't know, Teresa, if you wanted to speak up a little bit about the fair pay for home care, because I think it's, you're involved in it a little deeper than I am even.
Hi, I'm Teresa Cybers, I'm from the Figure Lakes Independence Center. I oversee one of the programs that were mentioned today, the registry, as well as work with New York Connects and that facility. We have three programs. I'd say that CDPAC, which is a Medicaid-funded home healthcare program, they make seventeen twenty-five an hour and that's the new pay bump that just happened for the new year. And the ISAP program, I believe, is just about the same amount per month, per hour? And the ISAP program, I believe, is just about the same amount per month, per hour. And then we also have the registry where they set their own rates and it can be anywhere from about $18 to $30 an hour because they're self-employed and they set their own rate and that's a private pay program. We have a statewide systems advocate in our office who is actively engaged in trying to increase the wage for home care, particularly those programs like CD-PAT that are Medicaid-funded. They're going to be going to Albany to do some advocating and we have a volunteer list. So if you would like to sign up for that, we send out emails, ways you can contact representatives. There's emails that come with, you know, all you do is fill in the blanks and then send it on and it makes it very easy for you, but the more voices, the better. So we're happy to take any names of people who are willing to add their voice and we can also share mailing and phone numbers, so if you don't choose to do the email. Does that answer it?
Beautiful. Thank you. Go ahead. Kathy has a question.
Now, that is a topic we do hear about and I know that the assembly member and I'm sure Senator Webb has really fought for that. It's heavy lift all the time, but I think you're right, keep pushing because that's how it gets happening.
I totally agree. One piece from an Office for Aging perspective, which I think is missed a lot, is that this is the Medicaid bump in pay, fair pay rate. We've received none of that funding. These are the same aids that we're serving, that are serving us through our agency contracts are the same aids that are serving Medicaid. So these rates, Medicaid has received this additional funding to support those. We haven't, but we need to use the same aids. So basically what happens with an agency is they come at us every year, want to negotiate a new rate. That new rate not only includes the aids' pay, but all the overhead too. So we're talking, you know, anywhere from $32 an hour to $37 an hour is what we pay the agencies. The aids are not getting that, you know, they're not getting that portion. We've received no more money, but because these agencies have to pay that new Medicaid rate, they expect us to increase our rates as well. We've got none of that funding. So that, that's kind of a dilemma for us because we don't see that. So we just have to keep that same stat, static amount of money that we get for our 3E funding and for our ISAP funding just keeps being chipped away unless people are being served because, because we have to increase our rates every year. Yeah.
What I'm going to do is not so much ask the question as make a comment and that is, I worked as a physical therapist in several different nursing homes for a number of years and in different places. And the best two that I worked in, one was run by the county, a different county than this one, obviously, and the other one was run by a church, the United Methodist Church. And, I mean, nursing homes are for-profit institutions and in the years I worked there, I saw the quality go down incredibly and, and the people are not, you know, slackers who work there at minimum wage. They're, they work hard. And so, you know, we used to have a county home, which we lost to a developer. And now, you know, why don't we take over one of these failing nursing homes instead of just, you know, propping them up, letting them change their name so people don't realize how horrible they've been? And, you know, it's just, it's just a travesty. Sorry. I could go on. Anyway.
Getting tired, this is micro, this is microphone. Yeah, I hear you. I totally understand. I think there's probably only three county nursing homes left in the state. Did you work in room county?
No, bath.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, so there's only a few left.
Only room two. You work in room two, yeah. Both of them.
Yeah. So it's, it is a dilemma and even that, even with, you know, us, with our mission, trying to keep people in their homes and communities and saving costs, Medicaid rates aren't even keeping up with nursing homes to be able to exist anymore and they're closing. So what, where are our options at this point? I don't know. You know, it's a difficult situation for sure. I hear you. Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. And Karen's been taking notes in the back and we'll capture all this and we'll use it to continue to do what we're doing and I appreciate that everybody came out today. So thank you. Good.